...meeting for Monday, April 24th, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks, May.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Mayor Potam Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I'd move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks, May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So moving into our agenda now. Item four, we have three presentations this evening. Item A is a resolution of appreciation for Ferndale Housing Commissioner Carol Morenci, and I'm going to ask Dan Martin, who has been our liaison to the Housing Commission, if he would say a few words and read that for us.
I would be honored. I'll start with reading it. Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to Carol Morenci for her dedicated service as a Ferndale Housing Commissioner. Carol has served as the resident commissioner for the past 15 years and has been instrumental in helping bridge the communication gap between the residents and administration. As a passionate advocate, she has assisted in bringing about many changes to enhance the lifestyle of our senior housing residents. Carol Morenci is a credit to this community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate her achievement. And on a personal note, I just want to add, with my time on the Housing Commission, serving there, Carol has been an absolute joy to work with, a tireless advocate for her residents, and through some pretty tough years. And I don't think we would have made it out of that as well as we did on the path that we have without Carol's influence and input. So I'm really honored to have worked with her, and I just want to thank her for her service. It's been incredible.
Carol, do you mind? Do you want to come up and we can hand you the proclamation?
We can come up here.
Give you a hug?
No.
Now, come on, Heather. Come with us. And I would even invite you, Heather, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to say as well. Heather is the executive director of the Housing Commission.
Well, I'll just echo the resolution and say that Carol's leadership has been an absolute treasure on the board at the Housing Commission, and in one short year, she's taught me so much in my new role. And I'd like to say that I will miss her, but I won't because I'll still get to see her because my office is where she resides. So we will get to enjoy, I hope, friendship, and I can turn to you for advice when I need it, and certainly the history and everything else that you have to offer. So thank you so much for serving our residents and the community. It's been a real pleasure.
Do you want to say anything?
No.
Benjamin Mahora. I don't know if, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And Fire Marshal Batten is going to introduce Benjamin.
Yeah. Want to grab that?
Yep.
Thank you, Your Honor. There we go. Okay, well, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to council and mayor Ben Mahora. He's 38 years old. He's originally from Basser, Michigan. Ben is married to his wife Catherine for the last 10 years. They have two kids, a son Levi, six years old, and a daughter Quinn, three-year-old. So Ben basically, basically began his career in emergency medicine and firefighting in 2001 with Lansing Township. He became a formal tactical medic for the Michigan State Police in Washtenaw County. He's been a firefighter paramedic for Meridian Township. And he heard everybody wanted to come to Ferndale, so here he is. On a side note, he's also a Level One CrossFit trainer, and he enjoys camping and hiking. So with great pleasure, I'm going to introduce Ben.
Benjamin, welcome to Ferndale. Yeah, I don't know if you have anything to add to that? All right. Welcome to the department. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great to meet you. Thanks. Thanks, Brian. And then our third presentation is our County Commissioner, Helene Zach, to give us an update on all things Oakland County.
Trying, but... Good evening, everybody. Helene Zach, your Oakland County Commissioner. For those people that are looking for a summer job, Oakland County Parks has lots of openings. They didn't get anywhere near the applications that they need, so you can go to the county website and find out more about it. Oakland County also published a new apprenticeship guide. I used to get it in hard copy, and that is on theadvantageoakland.com. And what this is, not everybody is the right candidate for college, but these are multiple apprenticeships and training opportunities with forecasting about jobs, salary ranges. It's really a very valuable tool. So you can find it there and find some other opportunities. It's a quick turnaround, but I do want to remind our high school seniors that the Junior Leadership Oakland Program is open for June, and applications have to be in by May 1st, so you'd have to do a really quick turnaround. Our water resource manager, Commissioner and his department, we are leading, are doing some cutting-edge technology, and we are in the process of buying a new piece of equipment that will process sludge from the Clinton River Initiative, and it will be marketable as some type of compost. So, you know, I'm very excited that we are literally turning trash into treasure. And, you know, it's a big purchase, but I like the fact that it's cutting-edge. I did vote yes at the urging of Chief Collins on the 911 four-cent surcharge. And let me explain this to everybody. Every year, I vote on adding a surcharge for emergency services for every telephone line that there is, whether it's cellphone, landline, whatever. And this is the fabric of our emergency services. And we in Oakland County are able to leverage up to 42 cents per line without going to a vote of the people. Presently, it's 28 cents, and we are raising it to 32 cents. And I don't do this lightly, but I need to explain that we are moving into a new technology system from the old copper landlines that, you know, AT&amp;T installed into an Ezinet system. And this is part of that whole process of moving that way. And there could and will be some additional charges later on. We're still waiting to see, you know, next year, what will the state kick in, you know, as we move into this new technology. We are getting new voting machines in Oakland County. I know you're aware of that. We did approve, you know, the expenditure in finance, and it'll come to the whole board. And I have to really commend our clerks' department, and they worked with the clerks. They went through a very thorough screening of the three different, there were three companies that the state identified that people could purchase from. And so Oakland County went so far as to work with how do I program the machines, doing hands-on tests and so forth. So we are getting new machines, and they should be live at the August election, so, which I think is going to be wonderful. This Saturday is no-fee animal adoption at the Oakland County Animal Care Center. There is a grant from BISL that is funding all of these adoption fees, so if anybody's thinking about going to get a new friend, it's free in Oakland County. Finally, prior to coming here, I went to the Citizens Advisory Council for the RTA, Regional Transit Authority. And we still do have a regional transit authority. I saw a wonderful presentation on mobility management and all of the different programs that are going on in Michigan, as well as pilots of how public systems have integrated some of these new technologies into their program. And the RTA Board is meeting for a retreat on May 18th at the Shriners Auditorium. It is a public event. The agenda will be posted within the next couple weeks, and, you know, they have to address where are they going, what are they going to do, and so forth. So I'm looking forward to, you know, the meeting and defining what's their vision and so forth.
Excellent.
That's it.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Formative as always. Appreciate it. All right, moving on now to call the audience. This is your opportunity, for those of you who are here with us in person, to come up and address council on any issue that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because you can talk about that when we get to that portion of the agenda. But come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours to talk about anything you'd like. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Kyle Schneider, and we live over on 2136 Chevlin Street on the northeast side. And my wife and I, we are involved with an organization called Michigan Abolitionist Project, and we volunteer through this organization. And one of the, this organization, it's founded on bringing, educating, bringing awareness and preventing human trafficking. And this is an issue that happens not only overseas but locally as well here in the United States. So one of the programs and projects that this organization has is the label program. And this is simply an adhesive label that you can put on the inside of restrooms, restroom doors, and stalls. So a lot of counties, they do it inside of highway restroom stops. But my wife and I, we were here and walking in the parks, and we noticed that there was restrooms here, and there's an opportunity to have just a small glimmer of hope, because on these labels is the national hotline number, where people that might have dire circumstances find themselves in these situations. And then these locations, for whatever reason, they can peel this label very simply and carefully off, and it has the number, they can text, they can call. It's just a small opportunity to provide a glimmer of hope for people in these dire circumstances. And so we're very passionate about this, and we're looking to see a movement towards bringing awareness to this issue. And we're just so thankful for Lloyd and the Department of Public Works, as well as the Police Department, and their support. And we just look to Mayor and Council for your support on this initiative as well.
Wonderful. Can you, and so you're going to leave us some stickers?
We have one right here. Yeah.
But how many do we need if we were to do the restrooms and, anyway, you guys can coordinate that. What a wonderful project.
I think it is. If I may through the chair, how do we get in touch with you if we have other places like non-cities that we would want to help you get those plugged into? Is there a way to reach you?
I have an email and a phone number, so if you want that.
If you want to go public with it, you'll be on TV. You can leave it with the clerk.
You could just leave it with the clerk. Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address council this evening? Michael Larry, you're not for the public.
Good evening. I just want to remind everybody that the 2017 Clean the Ferndale Up is coming up Saturday, May 20th, with check-in and registration here at City Hall beginning at 8:00 a.m. You can preregister online at cleantheferndaleup.com, and we look forward to another great year of doing some community pride. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? Heather?
Me again. Hi, Heather Van Puker, Ferndale Housing Commission. I just wanted to take a brief moment and update council and the community on our progress since we've completed the first quarter of the calendar year, which is our fiscal year at the Housing Commission. We did present and share with the community our strategic plan for the year, so I just wanted to let you know that we're hitting our marks and making progress as planned. We've had a consultant come in and help us review the foundational policy manuals that guide both of our programs. The community may not be aware that we have two primary programs. One is public housing, which are the two apartment towers here and 43 scattered site homes that are here within the city of Ferndale. But then we also serve Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb with housing choice vouchers or Section Eight rent subsidy vouchers. So those are two ways that we're able to help families that are in need find appropriate housing within the community. Our public housing here within the city of Ferndale went smoke-free April 1st. So all of our facilities are now smoke-free. Residents no longer smoke within their units or even on their balconies. They need to be at least 25 feet away from our properties to smoke. So we also, in concert with that, have undertaken a comprehensive physical needs assessment to take a look at what maintenance needs and upgrades we needed each of our properties, and we're going to start tackling those bit by bit. But as you might imagine, the price tag is somewhere between huge and enormous, so we're, you know, eating it as you do an elephant, one bite at a time. But, you know, it'll afford us the opportunity to make some improvements and then see if those really last, because we won't be having any smoke within the apartment complexes or the single-family homes. So I think that's a great improvement. One of the highlights that I'd make that is a significant change in our governing policy documents are residency preferences. We currently have residency preference for the city of Ferndale. We've strengthened those in the new policy documents. So a resident within the city of Ferndale who is income-qualified would find themselves at the top of our waiting list in public housing. Residents of the city of Ferndale who are elderly and/or disabled would be really, really at the top. And again, with our Section Eight program, that is Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb, so that preference applies, but on a broader scale. And I just would like to thank the city for the upcoming work that's going to be done on the cleanup of the Ferndale. We're looking forward to participating, and I hope our residents will have fun and enjoy cleaning up their properties. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on now to the next item of business, which is a public hearing, and that is... Oh, just, okay, we were, yeah. We're just wrapping up call the audience, but we have, always have time for our state representative, who I see has joined us this evening. Thank you. Representative Wittenberg, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well. This is perfect timing, I guess.
Bam, yes.
Good evening, everyone.
It was.
Hello, everyone, and hello, council and mayor. Good to see everyone. I was actually just coming in to say hello and let people know about a couple things upcoming for things that we're hosting here in the district. But let me just take a step back first and say I was at the state of the city, and I'm excited about the state of the city and where we are heading, and just commend, you know, all of you, thank you for what you're doing, and say, I know I'm probably speaking on behalf of the residents here, but we thank you. You are amazing stewards of the tax dollars here and doing amazing things. And this is, like I said, progressive city that is very fiscally responsible and doing amazing things for everyone here in the community. So let me commend you on that. It was a really, that's a good space over there, so it was a really nice event, so I'll tell you that. I'm hosting a town hall this coming Sunday, April 30th, at Berkeley High School, starting at 2:00. And it's a kind of a community engagement, a civic summit, to get people, I know people have been, I've never seen the amount of activism and engagement and people that want to get involved and want to know how they can get involved. And so with that in mind, we wanted to put something together with a lot of the organizations here, a lot of nonprofits that are doing work in the community and the surrounding area, and so the people are familiar with them and how they can get involved with some of the organizations. So a list of organizations, including the National Network of Arab-American Communities, Legal Women Voters, Sierra Club, Mother Injustice, Fern Care will actually be there as well, which is great, ACLU, Planned Parenthood, No Space for Hate, Count My Vote. So there's a bunch of different organizations. That's not even the entire list, and a lot of them actually have ties right here to Ferndale. So, but it's, each group is going to have a few minutes to just talk about what they do and some of the things people should be aware about of their organization, and how they can get involved to help these organizations, both with their time and financially, I would guess, as well. And then we'll have tables set up for everyone to be there, if they have pamphlets or information, sign-up sheets, things like that. So again, there's a lot of people who keep saying, you know, I want to do something, I want to get involved, and these are organizations that are doing amazing things in and around the community, and we want to create awareness for them. So I would encourage people to come out. It's, again, at Berkeley High School on Sunday, and that's at 2:00, which is on Catalpa. It'll be in the, I think it says the auditorium, but we're going to do it in the collaborative center, because it's a better space for what we're looking to do. And then, I was also trying to look here, I know I have coffee hours coming up as well. I can't seem to find them right now, I apologize, as I was running in here and put on the spot, but I know I have. So this will be, you know, this is obviously, you know, it's a more, it's a bigger setting, but again, we, you know, I host coffee hours every single month, at least two, and they're more of an informal setting where people can come, and it's, you know, it's a conversation about what's going on in Lansing, any suggestions people have, any concerns they have. And then, as always, you know, I'll give my phone number and my email and encourage people to please reach out to me if there's ever anything I can do to help. And as I say, if there's something I can do, then I will, that will help you out, and if not, I will point you in the right direction. So again, my, the phone number is 517-373-0478. Email is robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. And then, as far as what's going on in Lansing, not much. So the, you know, there's the budget process, and I don't serve on appropriations, on an appropriations committee, so, you know, I'll see stuff as it starts to work its way to the full house. And ultimately, you know, it's going to end up going to a conference committee anyway, and there'll be a group of people who will be working on our budget. So, but if there are issues, if people have concerns, please let me know as we're voting on the budget. But otherwise, all is quiet in Lansing, and so that's why I'm as active and as available as I can be here in the district. You know, I make the commute. I drive back and forth Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and I make that commute, so, because there's a lot going on here, and I enjoy being here. So that was it. That's what I came to talk about. I don't know if you guys have any questions or anything?
Any questions?
But again, encourage you all to come out Sunday if you're able to and spread the word.
It's a great idea. Yeah. Lot of people looking for a way to plug in. That's a wonderful way to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And so, again, creating awareness, you know, not everyone knows. And I actually, I think just today, I saw that we confirmed, like, AARP is going to be there as well. So it runs the gamut of all the different groups and interest groups that will be there. So, and even, I think we'll grab, I don't know if, did we, well, I'll talk to you guys offline, but I know some of, like, the Parks and Rec Departments will have some information there as well. I know we reached out to each community. But again, making this as comprehensive as possible.
Good.
So, thank you all.
Good.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we're moving on to the public hearing, which is the fiscal year 2018 through 2020 budget and consideration to adopt. And April, you're going to lead us through that?
I am.
Thank you.
Joe's going to pull it up real quick.
Yeah.
So first and foremost, I cannot believe this is my fifth budget presentation. I think that went by a little too fast for comfort. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. I think it's important to note the process of which we do the budget. I think that sometimes it's a misunderstanding, if you will, that council gets this today and we vote on it, and it's, that is not how it works. In fact, we actually start, believe it or not, we're already looking at next year. And so in the fall, we have established a process internally that we focus on our capital improvement plan, which it goes in front of the Planning Commission, and that starts prepping our staff to integrate that into the budget request. And then in November or December, depending on how that falls, City Council actually takes time and does a retreat to strategically plan and make sure that those focused areas that I'll talk about actually in just a few minutes are also presented in that budget. And then in the winter, right when we come back from the holiday, staff takes about two months of their time going through the budget, their budget, budget requests, taking into consideration the goals and priority areas that City Council has. And then we end up meeting with council in, typically in March. And actually, this year, we did an entire Saturday in March, I think it was March 11th, and then met again on Monday, April 3rd, for another four hours, I think it was. So there is a lot of time and intensity that goes into this budget process. And then, this, of course, is the ending focus where council actually adopts this. So I'm actually taking what was about 80 slides during the budget workshop and condensed it into about 20. So I want to make sure that the public knows that council has been incredibly engaged in the budget process, as well as staff, in that what we're presenting today are just basically budget highlights. One of the things, before I go into the strategic planning process, is that one of the goals that council has had is that we moved into a, we had been in the past, done a two-year budget cycle, and this is our first year where we're doing a three-year budget cycle, and we actually forecast, we did a forecast for two more years after that. So we've actually, in some ways, prepared a five-year budget with the first three being, hopefully, where we're going to land. Now, obviously, we can amend as necessary and things of that nature, but we're really proud of being able to bring a three-year budget to City Council this year. One of the other changes that I had mentioned or had talked about before is the strategic planning process that council had under, that they had taken over in last, just before the holiday in November. We actually did a major overhaul of how we do our budget planning. In the past, council has brought forward some budget initiatives, as well as some areas of priority for the staff, and we would merge them and kind of determine what we wanted to do. And this year, we did a much more pointed and concerted effort to really focus on areas that can be measured, areas of change, that this community will hear more on as we move forward with this process. But for the sake of the budget conversation, what we have are, you can call them critical success factors. I think the mayor referred to them in his state-of-the-city as priority areas. It's all, what it is, is what are we trying to achieve? Are our budget goals meeting some of the needs and the ideas and the strategic vision that council has? And so, without going into too much detail, we have seven priority areas that many of our budget decisions were made this year. It's economic prosperity, safe, protected, engaged community, supported infrastructure, accessible transportation, strong regional partnerships, organizational and financial excellence, and healthy and connected, invested neighborhoods. So as we went through that process, we worked with City Council to help them and show them all of the things that we were doing within our budget request met these priority areas. So we'll be working on getting more information to our residents about the overall strategic plan, but this is really the priority areas that we base a lot of our budget decisions off this year for the next three years. So I always like to get to brass tacks, if you will. People always want to know, they don't really care about the nuts and bolts. What does this look like for us? I know that. In the past, that's just been a big topic of conversation. So what I put on here is an overview of all of the rates. I'm going to talk about general fund budget first, and then we'll move into water and sanitation, and we'll talk about those in more detail. But in general, I think it's important to note that this year, the council has, is going, is recommended in this budget to lower the voted millage by one more mil. So in 2015, you can know at the top, we hit the highest, we ended up having to ask for the entire request that was before our residents. And that was because in 2014, we still had a dip in taxable value. It was unprecedented, and nobody expected taxable value to continue decline, to decline. And it was just in, I believe, in the tax year 14, that we saw our first time ever since 2010, I believe, and we finally stopped going into the negatives. And we were going in double digits negative. And so at that point, I remember that year, thinking, oh, my gosh, we might have to actually lay off if this continues. Unfortunately, it did start to level off. So with that, you can see that in 2016, we were able to lower that voted millage, one more, one mil, and we kept that stable for 16 and 17 as we worked our way through those budget years. And now I'm presenting you a three-year budget with a 3.452 voted. And now I'm presenting you a three-year budget with a 3.452 voted millage. So there's a lot of story in here that I'm going to talk about in just a second, though, about what that really means and some of the other factors that are into our rates. As I said before, you can see here that what I, what I love about this city council is how much that they do take their promises to our residents that we only want to use the voted portion of what we need. So we're not going to continue to be at the top of our millage rate just because we can. And that is one of the glaring things that council has brought to us every budget year is that we want to be mindful of the budget process, and we want to be mindful of ensuring that we're being the best source of our residents' money. So you can just see here a little bit more of the bringing it down in a total of two mils in the last two years, or three years, if you will. This is an interesting graph to see, if you will. One of the things that has also happened is that we're now going to be impacted by the heavily, the heavily rollback in proposal A. So again, when we were seeing a taxable decline, that was not a factor. But when we started seeing a rise in our property values and very low inflationary rates, we started getting tacked on the heavily, the heavily portion of losing some mils. So you can see through the next few years that without a choice, over the next two years, you're going to see another reduction of over 1.5 mils because of the heavy rollback. About a half a mil each year is what we're anticipating we're going to lose. So it was actually a much bigger deal that council was able to lower the voted portion because we're still going to be seeing a loss in that taxable value. So this year, last year, we had a rate of inflation of only 0.9%. Wait, Cheryl, is this year in 0.9 or last year was 0.9?
This year is 0.97. Next year was 0.9.
I'm talking about the inflation rate. I think we're only getting 0.9. 0.9 was this year.
This year's 0.9.
Last year was 0.3. So we're not even getting, that's not even cost of living. So it, you know, while it's a pleasure to be able to talk about, you know, this lowering of the voted millage, it's still a struggle financially, and it's a very complicated story to tell. Municipal finance is very confusing. So it's just one of those things that we're still not out of the woods, if you will. We're still going to be having to manage a continual deficit. We're not going to be able to get ahead. And I know that's very frustrating for residents because they see my properties increased value by 25, 30%. The city shouldn't have financial issues. This should be done, we shouldn't even have to have the voted. But the problem is, is we're not able to recoup the money as fast as it declined. I have a couple more slides just to kind of show you. You can see that orange portion is that voted, is the voted portion of the millage. But you can see that line that shows you that the revenue is really remained pretty stable. And above that green line is just from 2009, that's the only increase we have seen. So we're seeing our, again, our rate of decline, I think was at like 17%, but our rate of return is much smaller than that, like 3% or 4%. So it's a very slow moving scale upwards. In fact, at one time, it was predicted that municipalities would be where they were in 2008, '09, and 2020, not even close, not even close. So I know that there's a lot of conversations moving around right now in the state of understanding that this is a significant issue for communities, not to mention the loss in revenue sharing as well. It's been a huge impact to our budgets. So that is just kind of where we are in general as it relates to the state of our revenue and our finances. So we've had to be very careful and very concerted on lowering that millage, and I think that we have a really good solid foundation for our budget, having a five-year capital improvement plan as well as our strategic plan. And now we have presented a three-year budget with a, with a total of a five-year forecast, which I believe was really helpful in making the decisions that we made as it relates to lowering that millage and understanding what, what, what that looked like and do we feel very comfortable with our decision. So I think now that we kind of have that background, I'm just going to touch on some budget highlights. And again, when working with City Council, I think it was an 80-page PowerPoint, of which I'd be happy to share with anybody who wants to see that. We are going to have a budget book that'll have a lot more detail that people can see in, but within the next couple of weeks. But what I wanted to do is really focus on the budget highlights. And what we did internally was focus on what is a resident, what am I getting? What is this budget going to bring to me? So that's kind of where I focused because otherwise we would be here for, well, we met for like 12 hours in total. I don't think anybody wants that. So if there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt. In the area of technology, I know, again, that's probably the most unsexy thing about government, but it really isn't anymore. So, so many people are really using and wanting technology with their, within their community. So there's a couple of things that this community is going to see. One of the things that we've requested in our capital improvement is a gigabit fiber. I'm not going to go into too many details, but that just means it's a very fast internet, to be blunt. But that's going to lay the groundwork for, not only for our organization to be able to manage all of the things that are going online, but it's going to start to set the stage for us to allow some groundwork to be had for more public spaces with Wi-Fi. It's one of the key components that we'll need to start looking at more of that public component. We're not sure what that looks like yet. There's a lot of options there, but that's one of the key components of that. Not to mention, there are so many more services that we provide now that are online that require us to use bandwidth that is causing a slowdown. So we want to provide the best services we can to our community. And as always, we always want to say that we are open for business here at City Hall, but for those that use, that want to use the internet to do as much work as they can with the city, that's what will help, will help that process as well. The other thing that they're going to see, that our residents are going to see is C-Click Fix is coming in the next couple of months. This is going to be basically allowing the city to be open 24/7 for you so you can be able to just provide a concern or report a service disruption or anything that you need can be done right online. What we like about that, we're going to be able to track that. So we're going to make sure that people are being followed up with. We're going to be able to look at our process and go, what can we do to shorten that process? But also, what's going on? Are we noticing that this particular area has these particular issues? And we can start to take a look at that and map that and understand and actually look at more prevention rather than reaction. So C-Click Fix is, we're very excited, is coming in the next couple of months. Will be a good addition to our up, we're also doing an upgrade to our website using the tools and analytics that we've had for the last few years to make sure that we're providing the best website as well for those that want to use the internet to access City Hall. So again, it's kind of boring in some ways, but for a lot of people who want to use technology to participate in their local government or get what they need, we're setting the way to make that easier for folks. This is a big one. City Clerk is actually, has a lot of changes happening for this next year, starting with new election equipment. I think that's a crucial conversation to have. Our equipment is fairly old. They're working with Oakland County to identify the new workstations and tablets and things of that nature, the tabulators. So that will be coming, we believe, by the November election, Marnie, is that correct? So we'll have new equipment, which will be faster, help line management, that kind of thing. So we also, one of the things that we are working with on the clerk's office is online data management. So we have off-site storage everywhere. The box is full of information that is sitting in multiple locations to be safe and dry, if you will. And what we want to do is be able to get as much of that online as possible. This is again, helping us to participate more in open data, allowing people to access more information, and also for us to have that information. So right now, depending on what year and what you're looking for, we might have to go off-site, order the box, go through the box, that kind of thing. So we'll be looking at getting as much of that online as we, as we can and really redoing and looking at our records management to allow much more open, accessible government for those that are interested. Because nothing is more fun to wade through documents, so. But you would be surprised at how much information that there is for people there. So that will be a change in that department. In police, combined police and drug forfeiture, one of the things that we, we brought forward last year was the community policing, which was our community engagement officer. We have budgeted that for the next two years. It was a three-year demonstration project or pilot project, if you will, with, which has seen great success so far. A second program that we're working with is our partnership with the schools in creating a cadet program. As you know, we've partnered with the Ferndale Public Schools in their early college program. We'd like to put even more teeth into that program and provide an opportunity for some of these students to get real-life experience in the police department, in particular for those that are interested in the criminal justice aspect. So we'll be bringing, we'll call them cadets, part-time throughout the summer and during around their school schedules, and that will hopefully will start as well this summer. Another thing that has been a huge topic of conversation that will come out of drug forfeiture is the conversation of body cameras. So our department has been doing thorough research over the last year to find out what is the best cameras, what can integrate currently into our systems that we have in our car, in our in-car video and things of that nature. And so now that we will begin the process of looking at purchasing those through the research that we've had and also looking and retooling our policies in order to best address the use of body cameras. So again, for our residents, it just, we're continually trying to be as engaged as possible. And our whole goal in everything that we do is to be proactive more than reactive. And I think that's been a common theme over the last couple of budget years. Another area that I didn't put in here that comes up, council asks quite a few years ago, I think about three or four years ago, we started assisting and helping with youth assistance and putting in, and offering them some funds to help with their drug resistance programs and things of that nature. We did budget $4,000, as we have for the last few years, in the drug forfeiture funds. So that is there as well. Community and economic development, a couple of the highlights there that people will be happy to hear about is, again, this, we actually had a funnel of this a little bit differently. They had a lot of one-time expenses that are coming out. So one, two key components that are coming out of the community Economic Development Department is the screening wall. We're near Eight Mile with the railroad, as well as quiet zone implementation. Both of those are being reimbursed through CN. So it's a pass-through account, but we needed to account for that in the budget so they're, because we do have to pay for it and then we get paid back. So that is being paid in full by the CN Rail. So those, both of those should be, the quiet zones for sure will be in no later than the end of the summer, and the sound wall will be in construction. You'll notice a huge uptick in permits this year in community and economic development due to some large developments that are there. Again, these are one-time, one-time revenue generators. We aren't planning on having that high of permits over the next few years. So you'll notice an uptick in some of our contract numbers. In particular, we use SafeBuild for a lot of building inspections and things of that nature. This allows us to move up and down depending on the height of development of what we're doing and how many people we need. So we'll see, there's lots of changes with them, and their, their budget changes drastically over the course of these three years based on what they expect for permits. Another one, another change that you'll see in community and economic development, which we're really excited about, is hiring another planner that's focused on environmental sustainability. The FESC, along with a lot of the things that we have been doing here within our organization, have been focused on environmental sustainability, but we kind of hit a wall, if you will, as it relates to, there's so many amazing things that you can do that we just are not equipped to handle. We don't have the, we don't have the skill sets on staff for that. So this particular planner, not only will be able to help in the planning department with general planning, but will be able to really focus our area of everything that we do, from every park that we plan to development to buildings, things of that nature. How are we, how are we best providing environmental sustainability practices in there? And so that has been, I think our community has really rallied around ensuring that we're protecting and using the environment to the best of our ability, and this position is really going to help us with that in the, in the area of planning, but also be able to use them in other ways as well. So we're really, really excited about the potential that this position will bring to the skill sets to our organization. And this is actually, this planner, this position, because of the nature of it, a lot of it being in roads and water and things of that nature, gets disseminated through a bunch of funds, and so it's not just a general fund expense. And that's really important to, to ensure that all areas that we, that we do within this community, that we focus on the environmental sustainability portion of everything that we do. Public services, this is another one. This is an extension of the things that we have already prioritized, the tree canopy being one of them. One of the things that we've done beyond continuation of assessing our tree, our tree stock and what we, and the plan in place to continue to ensure that we have good trees, the right amount of trees, the right trees, things of that nature, that we're going to keep that going. But we've done, we've gone even further with that as part of the Master Land Use Plan and Strategic Planning was, what are we providing our residents for assistance and are we bringing the right skill sets within our organization? And so we'll be bringing on a company or a contractor, if you will, that has, it's an arborist that will be able to help not only with DPW and some of these key issues, but also a support system for our residents when they have issues with their trees and they need help and assistance in figuring out what to do. You know, we get a lot of questions, but I'm not sure if this tree is dying, is this the right species? I'd like to get a new tree. What should I do? We're going to be able to have the right people on, onboard to really take a look and, and help our residents. So it's not only for us, but for our residents. One of the things that we haven't talked about a lot, that we've kind of sporadically started having conversations about is, one of the things that we can't forget is that our organization has a lot of facilities. And while we've worked on renovating this one in the police department and the court building, one of our buildings that is starting to see some major disrepair is our DPW building. So what we need to do at least is to assess what, what is the longevity of that building? What does that look like? Because one of the things that council here does really well is we're always looking ahead, and we need to be able to be prepared for that building. And it's, every year, it gets a little bit worse. So we need to do at least first an assessment of what does that look like? What is the longevity of that building? And so that would be the first step before we decide what's next. Parks, we've talked a lot about parks. What we have done is, is that our goal is over the next two years is to be able to really focus on the $2 million that our residents approved in 2015, really take a look at getting, really moving on some of those big, those big projects such as maybe a splash pad, per se, or whatnot. But we'll be focusing on over the next two years, using that $2 million to really boost our park system. But not only have we done that, we are also including in capital money every year to keep going with our parks and to make sure that we're constantly putting money into them and ensuring that they're meeting the needs of those neighborhoods. We did, as you know, we just merged Parks and Recreation, and one of their goals will be to really take a look at how, how are our parks connecting to our community and our neighborhoods? I think we all know that it used to be your local school was your, was your anchor to your neighborhood, but with schools of choice, that's really changed. And we really want our parks to be a representative of the community of which they are in. So hopefully, you're going to start to see, to see really the growth and the development of our parks and how they're all going to have their own little personalities. So really excited about that there's a lot more to come on that. But I just thought it was important to note that not only are we doing, do we have that $2 million, but we have budgeted for the next few years more money out of capital to make sure that we keep that going. This is actually, kind of that was the end of our general fund. I just wanted to show that you can see that our revenues have stayed very consistent. We are not anticipating putting any more money into our fund balance by keeping this over the next three to five years. Again, the last two are forecasts, they're not as detailed, but it's a good approximation. We're keeping our fund balance at about 27%, which is where council wanted it to be between 25 and 30. It gives us a little flexibility if we need to dip into that at any time. But it's important to note that we're not planning on adding anything into that. But I just wanted to show in general how consistent we have been over the course of the last few years of keeping our revenues and our expenditures very stable. Is there any questions as it relates to general fund before I move on to the enterprise funds? Again, to the public, this is council's like fifth view of this budget. Maybe, okay. Major local streets, again, it's the same story to tell. The significant portion of the work that's being done for major and local came from the road bonds, again, that were approved by our residents. We have three series of bonds. This first series was about $17 million. There's a long list of roads that are getting repaved, so I didn't list them here. But on our website, in our city's capital improvement plan, you can actually, it's very interactive. You can click on the streets and see where you are. We have a forecast of streets that are coming up in the next few years, but we do know, I always have to give the caveat that things do change, but for the most part, you can kind of see where your road, where your road falls. So then the majority of that money is coming from the street band. Sanitation, this one is, we're excited to report that we are moving single stream this year. Currently, Sakura is working on their new, the new Murph Building. Currently, SACRA is working on their new, the new Murph building. That more than likely will not be done until November, but we've got, we have received word that single stream will start prior to the Murph being open. We're still not sure of the date. It's anywhere between July and September. And as soon as we know more, we absolutely will start promoting that with our community. People will be, get an opportunity to have roll-off carts will allow much more room for recycling and options for those that, you know, if it's, you know, they don't want that large of a roll-off, well, there will be opportunities to get a smaller cart as well. But we're really excited about the single stream that's coming. And we actually anticipated that. We worked through that last year in our budget. And so, one of the things that we did is we planned ahead again for the cost of that. So, that's already been banked into our rates. And this, I like this slide again because it, it goes back to the original conversation I had about the challenges that we are, that we are being faced with as it relates to our millage rates. So, the sanitation fund is also subject to headly. And so, what was really interesting is when you look at our revenues in the sanitation fund, we're actually only seeing an increase of 12, about an average of $12,000 a year from our, from our millage rate. So, everything else has to come in rates. And so, we have about an average of 4% increase each year. 3% is a 3% increase each year in our hauling fees. So, that's 3% of that 4% and the 1% is, the other 1% is a lot of, you know, is our costs and/or the fact that we're not getting any more revenue. So, this is, to me, just goes to show you again, the challenges that we're being faced with, with headly. If our, if we were able to have, take full maximum capabilities of our millage rate for sanitation, our fees wouldn't be as high. So, it's, you know, at the end of the day, it costs what it costs for sanitation, but that's why people will see an increase in their fees versus an increase in their taxes for that particular portion. So, I wanted to give a history as it relates to sanitation rates. Again, we're going to see an average from 18, 19, and 20 of 4% each year. And we did just go back out to bid. We, we are part of SACRA. And so, they had just recently of last year went back out to bid. So, we were able to hold steady with our hauling rates at about 3%. Auto parking fund, I don't know if anybody knows, but we're looking at a parking deck potentially. So, what we did when that fund was really accounted for what potentially would cost for a bond, as well as we put money in for parking support as it relates to temporary parking strategies. We had to take into consideration that typically your first couple of years of a, having a parking deck built, you see some revenue lost as you're trying to, as you're getting people into the parking deck. And so, we took a lot of those into consideration on the auto parking fund. This fund for sure will come back for major adjustment. And we just targeted what we could and what we knew to be true at the time. So, I will count though that one of the things that keeps coming up is that we have promised that we were working with DPW that we will not be redoing any parking lots while we're in construction. So, we're moving around some of our parking lot. The plans we had for parking lot maintenance have been moved around to accommodate that. So, that question comes up, so we like to bring that up. So, again, that fund will be, we revisit it in the major adjustment, I am sure. So, the last one is our water and sewer. This is such a fun one. We've done a lot with this fund. We've been up and down a little bit just due to some of, you know, really trying to right the ship and making sure that, you know, that we have the right rates at the right time. One of the things that we started in 2015, or 14, I believe, I think it's 14, is we had Plant Moran look at what we call a smoothing model, a five-year model. So, this year was the first year, or actually, so I think it was 2015, I apologize. 2016 is the first year that we use the smoothing model. And we, every year will update that. So, we're kind of always be, so right now, once we turn in this budget, we'll get another five years and we'll smooth it out again. So, what you'll notice is that there's about a 3, 3.5% increase in 17, 18, and 19. That is, we have almost two, we have over $2.5 million in capital planned for water, water and sewer. So, you'll see that that primarily makes up the increase as it relates to why costs are going up. So, we are a pay-as-you-go community as it relates to our capital needs for our water and sewer. And so, again, once we, we have the model, we'll re-smooth it again and make sure that we're, that we're keeping rates as steady as possible. Is there any questions on water? Again, with some of the changes that we have made, I just want to, I know it, they're still going up, but costs continue to rise, but at the height than 2012 at 110. In 2020, we're not, we're still not back there yet. So, we have made a concerted effort to reboot and really take a look at our fee schedule and our, and how we do our fees in water. Any other questions on that? So, this is on one slide for everybody to see of what they can expect from the city over the course of the next year. I think that I am thrilled with our team that we were able to put together a three-year budget with a two-year forecast beyond that. I think that was very helpful in the conversations that we had. And it allows council to be very strategic and forward-thinking and know and understand what our risks are over the next few years. And I think that obviously there'll be some changes when you go that far out, but to just have some kind of idea of where we are is so helpful in our decision-making. And I really appreciate council's push to really move us in that direction. So, I don't know if council has any more questions or any clear points of clarification they want to give, but other than that, I've, I have finished my presentation.
Well, it is a public hearing, correct?
Yes, it is.
So, that's the introduction.
Yes.
And at this point, I would open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on the resolution to adopt the new budget. All right? I don't see anyone. So, I will close the public hearing. And then I would open it up to council for questions, comments, thoughts.
I would just, through the chair, I don't have any questions. As the city manager pointed out, we've, we've seen this a lot. But that's a good thing because I think I'm really happy where this budget's landed on, particularly the fiscal responsibility that this council has shown through the years and in this budget as well and reflects in the next five. So, I just don't want anybody to interpret lack of questions to equate to lack of engagement because we've all been incredibly engaged in this process.
Yes.
This is the end of the room.
I would just like to add that I'm glad that we're finally doing some very wise investments. We're looking at some things that are kind of forced upon us, which is the new voting equipment, but things like C-Click Fix, the gigabyte fiber, the body cams. I'm sorry, technology sexy.
Okay. You can have that.
So, I'm, I'm really glad that we're doing some great, great investment.
It's sexy and you know it.
It is.
Other comments?
I did have some questions. Not only are we approving the city's budget tonight, but we're also approving the DDAs. And we've only received one presentation from them. And I know that they received guidance on how to modify their budget. And I was wondering if those changes had been made? And is there someone here from the DDA to ask, answer questions tonight?
They are not here. But Cheryl, they did adjust their budget to reflect the parking, correct?
I will say that budgeting in general is not sexy. We spend a long, a lot, some people like it more than others. But I want to, first of all, congratulate staff. This is an enormous undertaking each year to really comb through. And we've changed this budget dramatically in at least the seven years that I've been here. It was, the original budgets we used to get were frankly very confusing. The funds were mixed up in a lot of ways that were not always clear and obvious. So, I like the fact that this is now sort of a project-based budget, so it's easier to understand. I love the fact that it is multi-year. And I, I think when I first got on council, people were sort of like, you know, what's he talking about doing the multi-year? But as you said, it really forces you to look out further, to estimate your revenues further and your expenses further and, and plan in advance. And then the key component added this year being the strategic plan, which has really helped us focus on those projects in those key priority areas that are really going to have the greatest impact for the city going forward. And so, and that, and integrating that into the budget so that we're actually spending money on the things that are the most important are, are very important to me. And so, I appreciate all the work that staff and council have done on this budget to bring it in. And so, thank you.
Can I add on to that?
Of course.
I think continuous improvement has been one of our core, I guess, is that a value or is it a core value? And you and your team have always have risen to the occasion. And every year it just gets, I guess, easier, easier in that the budget approval meeting is easier, but the, maybe the path and the conversations to get here are just more thoughtful and deliberative. And I, I'm just wowed every year how much more thorough. So, we've got a lot to do.
I just want to thank our staff, all of our team for the participation. But most importantly, Cheryl did a lot of work. We almost did a zero-based budget this year. We started over again. This will be our second time that we tore that budget apart. She spent countless hours working through that. Joe, again, was a huge help on the, on the team. And this year, we actually had Jordan on our team, Jordan Torri, as well as Captain Palazzolo as well. So, just every department had really, really participated, but that, that team really led the charge and Cheryl in particular, countless, countless hours of getting us to this place. So, thank you.
Awesome. So, with that, a motion would be in order.
You have two motions.
Two motions, actually.
Just to clarify.
Um, one around the budget and one around the rates. Councilman Pollock?
I move to adopt the triennial budget for fiscal years 2017 to 2018, 2018 to 2019, and 2019 to 2020, as submitted by the city manager on April 24th, 2017.
Support. It's a move by Pollock and supported by Martin. Now, any other comments on the, on the triennial budget?
Can't be just really echoing everyone else and just thank you for all of your work. I mean, city manager Lynch is not kidding when she said that document was about 80 pages and we put a lot of time into it. So, I really appreciate it. I mean, the, the work and the responsibilities that went into putting it together. And I'm excited for the next few years.
All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, a second motion would be in order for the rates.
I make a motion to adopt the appropriations resolution setting the tax rate, water and sewer rates and sanitation fees for fiscal years 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, as submitted by the city manager on April 24th, 2017.
Support.
Move by Pollock and supported by Leaks May. Now, any other additional comments or questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted as well. Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. These are items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So, let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the special and regular meeting minutes of April 10th, 2017. Item B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming May 1st to 5th, 2017 as Teacher Appreciation Week in the city of Ferndale, as submitted by councilwoman Leaks May. Item C is the approval to purchase Larvicide and adoption of a resolution requesting reimbursement under Oakland County's West Nile Virus Program. Item D is the approval of the special event permit for the 2017 Funky Ferndale Art Fair on September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th of this year. Item E is the approval of the special event permit for the 2017 DIY Street Fair, also on September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th of this year. Item F is the approval of a request to backfill a DPW customer service rep with data analyst position, as submitted by our director of HR. Item G is the approval of a license agreement for Dino's extended outdoor cafe area for the Ferndale pedestrian alley for special events. Item H is the approval of a software license agreement with Heart Inter-Civic as required by the state of Michigan for new election equipment contingent upon approval of an agreement of agreement language by the city attorney and authorization for the city clerk to execute that agreement. And finally, item I is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have two questions of clarification, if I may. The first one is probably for Michael. For the permit for the Funky Ferndale Art Fair, there is language in the, in the motion or the documentation that says we require them to handle trash and recycling. My question is, do we require they actually have recycling at these events? Is that in the agreement for all these special events? Or is the minimum baseline that they're just handling trash?
The, the language is, is that they're encouraged to do so.
Can we, and it's probably a conversation for the special events committee, but I'd like to see conversation about us requiring recycling, not just trash. I think as a city, we've taken a strong stance on that and I, I'd like to strengthen up our requirements. I'm fine with this going forward tonight, but as a matter of policy, I'd like to see us tighten up our requirements and add recycling to that.
Okay.
So, if somebody can take that back and report back to us about what we've done, that would be terrific. And then the second one is about item E. And there's language in there about the temporary sound limit modification. Michael, this may be you again. How much higher, I didn't go back and look this up, but how much higher does this temporary sound modification take us beyond the sound ordinance?
Chief Collins, could you come to the podium, please?
And I guess secondarily, once chief has had a chance to answer, have, we've done this before for them, I think. And have we received complaints about this?
No, we have not, councilmen. I can't tell you exactly what those numbers are. I believe they are five decibels higher in each of the A and the C weights, but it could be, it could be higher than that. We utilized a, we utilized the, put it in play several years ago at this, at the, I believe at Pride Fest. And then we've kept it at that level because that was the level that we received no complaints from on the west side. So, we can adjust those at this point, but it seems that those are the level that seems to be reasonable to raise them for an event and to keep the residents still have some semblance of peace and quiet.
That's terrific. I'm, I'm fine with it then. I was just looking for the logic behind it, if we've gotten complaints on it. So, thank you.
Actually, I, that kind of peaked, a question for me, actually, actually think this is, this is Mr. Larry's question. For the DIY, in past, I believe music has always ended at 11 o'clock on the weekends and 10 o'clock on Sunday. And yet, I noticed the time now is midnight for Friday and Saturday and 11:00 PM on Sunday.
No, the events, that's what the hours of operations are, and they have to shut the music off one hour prior to the actual closing of the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Good catch. No good question. Other comments or questions on the consent agenda?
A move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Yeah, hang on. Yeah. So, move by Martin and supported by Pollock. Yes. And councilwoman Leaks May, I think it would be appropriate at this time during discussion to, to read the resolution if you would.
All righty.
Yeah.
All right. Well, just a little bit of history. A parent in the community contacted me and asked if we could put together a, I guess, a proclamation or resolution regarding Teacher Appreciation Week. So, certainly I want to give a shout out to Julie Osborne because this was her idea. And she reached out to me to do this. So, okay. At a regular meeting of the Ferndale City Council, the city, of the city of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held in council chambers at 300 East Nine Mile, Ferndale, Michigan, 4220, on the 24th day of April, 2017, the following resolution was moved, well, maybe moved and supported unanimously. Teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and teachers encounter students of wide differing backgrounds. And our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council proclaims May 1st through the 5th, 2017 to be Teacher Appreciation Week in the city of Ferndale. And teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council proclaims May 1st through the 5th, 2017, to be Teacher Appreciation Week in the City of Ferndale, and be it further resolved that the Ferndale City Council strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Excellent.
So, yeah, thank you to our teachers. They do a lot of work. And our students.
Yes, they do. Excellent. All right, any other comments or discussion on the consent agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, and we just have one item this evening, and that is the appointment of Brett Gurek to the planning commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019. Who's going to introduce?
I can.
Okay.
We do have an opening on the planning commission. Mr. Gurek is currently employed in the planning department in Macomb County. Is he here, Brent? Are you here? Okay. But he's got a pretty specific skill set that I think will be of great assistance to the, to the planning commission, including the land and water program areas he's currently the associate planner for. He's worked in environmental consulting and ecological restoration, and holds a master of planning degree from the University of South California's Soul Prince School of Public Policy. So I would highly encourage that council appoint Brent to the planning commission, and I would like to move to confirm the appointment of Brent Gurek to the planning commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, any discussion? I guess I would just say I continue to be impressed, not only with the volunteers in general that step up, but the planning commission in particular. We have some very highly qualified people. I would feel really dumb on that commission.
I do.
So.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of brain power on that commission.
It really is good, and this looks like another wonderful addition, so.
Yeah, I think it'll be great.
Excellent. All right. Any other comments or questions? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. So that brings us to call to council. And police chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Anything further, Ms. Collins?
All right. Fire marshal Battin, anything for the good of the community?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things real quick. Week ago Saturday, we did have a serious fire on an eight-mile commercial building. Guys made a great stop on that. There were no fire stops in the building, so they stopped it in the first 3,000 square foot bay. The cause of that fire was an electrical extension cord buried by boxes in the building. And I think it's just important to put out there to the public that, you know, extension cords need your space. In this case, it overheated, an electrical short occurred, and ignited the combustibles nearby. So just want to put that out. And the second thing is, is that open burning is back in season again. You can get a permit, we want to make sure that everybody knows they have to get a permit from the fire department. They can call us at 248-546-2510. I'll have to work with staff. We can't find the online application right now, so I'll work with staff tomorrow and getting that back, so.
All right.
But look forward to that. And just be conscious of the fact that open burning isn't air quality issue, it's not just a fire hazard. So if it's atmospheric conditions are such where you're burning something, the smoke is traveling into your neighbor's windows or in their yard, we will ask you to put it out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lorena, anything from parks this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few updates. We've applied for quite a few grants, so I just wanted to let you all know what we're looking forward to getting funding from. One grant is a GLRI grant from the U.S. Forestry, which is to implement green infrastructure practices using planting of trees as well as plants and beautification along with that, an amount of $200,000. And the park that we selected is Harding Park. In addition to that, the MDNR grants are moving along. We submitted both of the grants for Martin Road as well as Harding Park, and that includes bathroom improvements, walking paths, and so on and so forth. I know we discussed this prior, but it has been successfully submitted. In addition to that, we just recently submitted another GI, Green Infrastructure Grant, and we worked along with CED and had assistance from DPW as well. And the grant is focused around community engagement. So the idea is to get the community engaged in the implementation of green infrastructure at one of our parks. So we've selected Wanda Park, because that's another park in addition to Harding and Martin Road that seems to have flooding issues. And the idea of that grant is to create a pilot project, which we are calling Green Parks and Green Neighborhoods. And so we are going to involve, bring in someone who can educate us as well as the community on green infrastructure and different designs and systems. The community will have the opportunity to select which design they think could be best fit for Wanda Park. And then it will also be the opportunity, or a learning opportunity, for them to implement that GI system at their own properties if they have issues with flooding and help manage stormwater.
Excellent.
And that's an amount of $10,000, and we should be notified by May 5th on that grant.
Excellent.
And then just one more reminder is that the bike rodeo will be held on May 18th. That's a Thursday, and it'll be from 4:00 to 8:00 at Shiford Park.
Always a good time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Joe, anything from IT or assistant city manager world this evening?
Yeah, just wanted to briefly give an update on the West Troy parking development. First, from a content perspective, as always, I'm going to be promoting the project website, www.parkferndale.com. And as part of that, we're going to be, we've started this weekend, but for those who've subscribed for alerts, for email or text alerts, you can do so from the website, as I'm demonstrating right now. But we're going to be doing FAQs that we receive, we're going to be responding to FAQs we receive as part of a promotion called Friday FAQs Alliteration. And so we'll be doing that bi-weekly every other Friday. So sign up and register for updates to receive those updates frequently every other Friday. Our next one will be the following Friday. We just did our update this past Friday. You can also see all the content that we post under the news section, so you won't miss anything either. If you don't subscribe, you can still look at the Friday FAQs on the website. We do expect, we're still working through some of the preliminary design process, so architects and engineers are still doing some of the backend work. We do hope to have some preliminary concepts to present to the public by the beginning of June, late May, and I will be providing another update when I can at the next council meeting on how that's coming.
Very good.
And any questions?
Any questions, Joe? Thanks, Joe. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? No? All right. Kara, anything from communications or community engagement?
Hello, I'm here tonight communicating and engaging on behalf of Justin Lyons, our city planner. So I wanted to remind everybody that May is Bike Month nationally, as well as here in Ferndale. And there are a bunch of events happening, which we probably won't go all through right now, but the main point is, I wanted to let everybody know, the first event is a community-led bike ride. It's next Monday evening. If you go to our Facebook page, you will find that there is an event that has been made, so you can click to attend and get all kinds of updates and things like that. It's going to be led by the bike shop, but Justin Lyons is going to be attending all of the rides, so he can provide education about the infrastructure and let people know about the paths and things like that. And then we are going to have updates about the different events. For example, the bike rodeo, I have it right here, Bike Rodeo is Thursday, May 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. We've got about five different guided rides planned throughout the month. There is going to be a smart cycling class and more. So the information is on our Facebook page, it is on our website, it is on the Ferndale Moves website, and it is also on cable. You'll also find posters all around town, as well as postcards all around town, so that you can get all the information in any way that you want to communicate. Any questions?
Excellent. Look forward to that. Joe, we passed the budget. Anything else from the financial department?
All right. Jordan, anything else from community economic development?
Just, hi, council, good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick events that are coming up, both at 965 Wanda here in Ferndale. This Friday, the 28th, at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, we have our Tech 248 Oakland County meetup. For those who aren't familiar with Tech 248, it's a gathering of all the tech entrepreneurs in Oakland County. They have regular meetups throughout the, throughout the county, and it was Ferndale's turn to host, and so we'll be there at 965 Wanda. We have about 115 people RSVP, so it should be a really great event. It's free, so come on by and hang out with us. The second event that we're going to be having at 965 Wanda is on May 15th, from 5:30 to 7:00. It's our RRC certification. So from that day forward, we'll be an official redevelopment-ready community for the MEDC, so just wanted to let you know about those. And you can RSVP online or just call our office at CED.
Yes. Very nice. Thank you. I know you're not a department, but any parking issues that you would like to share this evening? All right. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, all right. April, in addition to your presentation, anything else for the city manager's office?
No, just again, to the recreation, park and recreation department, they are a grant writing machine. They also did submit on time for Geary and Wanda Park for the MDNR for this next year. So they're writing grants left and right, so hopefully we get all that funding.
Right. Great, thanks. Dan?
One item, mayor. Council, recall, at the meeting on the 27th of March, it objected to the renewal of three licensed establishments. Those were sent to the liquor control commission. Communication has been received by one of the licensees in particular that indicated the intent to cure the deficiency this week. And council, in the past, in discussing with the city manager, has in the past considered resolutions rescinding the objection, contingent on all of the deficiencies being cured. One of the reasons council might wish to entertain such a motion this evening would be to avoid the possibility of a hastily scheduled special meeting later this week. It's certainly the prerogative of council not to do it if, because the deficiency still does exist, but it has in the past considered resolutions of that nature to avoid the potential that the establishment cured the deficiency and still can't get that matter to the LCC because the LCC won't issue the renewal license until the objections rescinded.
And did you say that we've heard from one of the three?
One in particular, but there's another establishment which has historically paid late, Blue Nile, is that that particular establishment, the city has not received confirmation one way or the other as it relates to the status of that particular licensee. But one of the others has indicated a plan to pay by Wednesday.
So we, so what you need is a motion that says for these three, so we don't have to meet later if they make.
If, if they cure the deficiency would be the proposal.
We'd, I would remove the objection.
Which is our ultimate goal, is just to get them to.
That's right.
Concur in their, in their fees. Do we feel confident that all three of these have been noticed and communicated with and understand the deadline?
Yes, I think all three of them understand the deadline. As, I don't anticipate all three of them curing. I do expect one to make a significant effort to do that as it relates to the second one, the Blue Nile, I'm not sure. But a motion this evening would avoid that potential where council might feel like it needs to try and schedule a closed session later this week.
The DDA is going to.
Not a closed session, excuse me, a special, special.
But a special session. Right. The DDA is going to follow up again with the Blue Nile, so hopefully they'll be able to clear that up by Wednesday.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind objections, renewal of the liquor license for Blue Nile and French Gourmet and Posh contingent on payment of outstanding delinquencies by Wednesday, April 26th, 2017.
Support. Move by Martin, supported by Pollock.
And just through the chair, that, that date would allow for opportunity to get such a resolution up to the LCC. That's why it's not the 30th, which is Saturday.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? We have done this in the past, and again, like I said, the goal is to get them to pay up by the end of the month, so I have no objection to that. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Anything else, Dan?
Nothing further.
All right. Councilman Martin?
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Councilwoman Leaks May?
I just, something I neglected to do earlier with regarding the teacher resolution is to really thank Marnie for printing all these copies and putting the resolution together, so thank you, Marnie. City clerk Marnie, too, for putting this together. Just wanted to put your title in there. But other than that, I have nothing.
All right. Councilman Pollock?
I have one item. This Thursday, April 27th, is Dining Out for Life, the annual dining fundraising event raising money for HIV/AIDS service organizations. This event helps one of our local MAC, MAC Health Matrix. And three of the restaurants, there are many restaurants throughout the metro Detroit area that are participating, but I will mention three Ferndale restaurants that are supporting, and that is Saji Bistro, Christine's Cuisine, and Local Kitchen and Bar. They are all donating 25% of the bill to this event. So if you go out to dinner on this Thursday, please choose one of those local Ferndale restaurants, and if you're not in Ferndale, choose one of the other participating restaurants. You'll find out more about it at www.diningoutforlife.com.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor Porton, Piana?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? All right. I just have one item, which is, I want to, it's a shout out and a thanks to staff who helped put together something that we've been talking about for a number of years, which is a nice volunteer appreciation event. And last Tuesday, preceding the State of the City address over at the Rust Belt, we put on, and you all put on, a really nice event where we honor all the people who serve on the boards and commissions, the planning commissions, and the DDAs, and the library boards, and all of the ways that people give of their time and their talents to this community without anything in reward, other than just the satisfaction of it. And so it's been a goal of ours to show them a little bit better love, and so I just wanted to call out the, the team that put that event together, because it was Marnie and Barb Miller, Cindy Wilcock from the DDA, Darlene Hamburg, April, and Michael Larry. Did I miss anyone?
Kara.
Huh?
Kara.
Oh, and Kara, oh my goodness, who I stressed out, big time. Over that, yes, excuse me, Kara. So thank you all very much for making that a wonderful event, and I really hope it becomes an annual event.